Spread that dirt on a thirty-foot area there.
Okay.
So, everything that came out of here went here. Now, everything from here goes back. It doesn't drain the surface at all.
Oh, we left openings for the water in to go in.
So, where there's not an opening, it's wetter now than it was before.
Well, there might be a few errors here, but uh...
But the entire ditch has water. The entire ditch has a lot more water now than it had before. Especially down here at the end where this water goes to here and it can't go out past here. Now, they just did this, this um, where is...
No, right here, three oh three.
Three oh three, yeah, okay, they just did this short section here.
Yeah.
But that's holding a lot of water now.
Yeah.
And all this up through here had water in it.
Well, it's a very flat grade, it's like a tenth per hundred on it. So, there may be water there in the ditch.
But I mean, you know, we're talking a lot of water. More water, I mean, more water than was ever there before. Is standing in the ditch, is like all got moss grown on top of it.
There is some water, I'll agree with that, but there's not as much.
I understand you're not gonna have it dry, you know, because you're doing that, it's impossible.
Yeah, watershed.
It's impossible. And, you know, low spots will fill themselves in over time.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. But the thing is, there, I mean, this benefited me none. Because, I mean, it's still, it's what this, the surface in here, because this doesn't affect me anyway, but all that water that comes out of here just stays there. Because this, right now, is a lot higher than it used to be.
Yeah, maybe some areas, but we could...
No, I mean, the whole, the, when you, when you take all that dirt out of here, and then, then you flatten it out in this area, you're tapering it back that way. What did that benefit the surface, anyway? It didn't benefit the surface at all. It made it worse because now you have a lot more dirt. You're this much higher at the ditch than you were before.
Well, yeah, but we, we left some openings there, we left openings.
Give us your phone number, we'll meet you out there and take a look at it next week.
I mean, yeah.
Four one seven nine, and six five three, three three four eight.
What was his name?
Joe Chappell. Like I said, I didn't look at that today, but it hasn't rained now for a few days. But the other day, there was, there was over six inches of water standing in.
We'll meet him out there next week and take a look at the leveling and the construction techniques.
Okay, anyone else? That's it.
So, what do we propose to do on this one? What, what seems to be the issue? Because that was like a little sidebar with you guys, so...
When they excavate the ditch, they take the dirt and they put it on the side and they level it off and then...
So, they're leveling it this way? And the water is going to their ditch?
Usually, we cut, cut a hole through it and drain the water to the hole and take it through. And it, you know, they may not have gotten that done on his property.
Okay.
Another thing, Ted and Marshall from our office walked all these ditches. And we're gonna do, let another contract out for all the ditches. We missed a few things. Tile outlets, uh, surface water came in, so we're gonna put a rock chute in different of them. So, we're not, you know, we're gonna fix some of them. Some of the seeding didn't come, and it's too late now, but, uh, yeah, we were gonna do some seeding this spring, but it, the spring was so bad, so we're gonna put it off till at least, uh, the first extender at the end of August and seed the bad areas. But we wanna, we still wanna, uh, there's some repair work. You know, some tiles showed up and, um, so we missed a few places where water came in. We got some erosion, and we wanna take care of those before we put them on maintenance.
Okay. I appreciate it.
I would move to approve the maintenance agreement on this, on the Pittsfield Township.
One second.
Further discussion? Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
For Zirker Nye Ditch, Henrietta Township. In accordance with Section 6131.63 of the Ohio Revised Code, notice is hereby given for a public hearing to consider placing this ditch in Lorain County on permanent county maintenance. This ditch has been completed by Lorain County Engineer and Lorain Soil and Water Conservation District. And part of the agreement with the property owners was that this would be placed in county maintenance after construction. The Board of Commissioners by Resolution Number 03391 adopted May twenty-second, two thousand and three, instructed the clerk to schedule the public hearing on Thursday, June twenty-sixth to consider placing this ditch in Lorain County on permanent county maintenance. The publication of ditch hearing was published in the Chronicle Telegram on June eighteen, two thousand and three, and letters were sent to property owners on June tenth, two thousand and three. Zirker Nye Ditch, Henrietta Township, with a total construction of sixty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-three dollars and thirty-seven cents. Fifty-five property owners are affected with ten acres or less at thirty dollars per acre, and ten acres or greater at a cost of three dollars per acre benefited.
Okay, once again, anyone wishing to speak and regouse to this project, please stand and raise your hand to be sworn in.
The, uh, Zirker Kennedy Ditch is in Henrietta Township and runs from north of one thirteen, parallel to Vermillion Road on the west side. Goes up across, is one thirteen, and it comes back and it turns and, uh, goes through, uh, Mr. Parker and Mr. Zirker's property back up to Vermillion Road. Uh, the ditch was cleaned out, the culvert under Vermillion Road was replaced and enlarged. And then, uh, through our garage, we replaced some tile on the east side of the road to improve drainage and there had been a problem for a number of years. We used the thirty dollars for ten acres and under, three dollars per acre benefited for the whole watershed. It'll, it'll raise, um, or collect per year about thirty-five hundred dollars. This is a pretty long, long ditch to maintain. And I guess we'll open it up to any questions, comments?
Right, John. Walter Potledge, show one 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 four nine Vermillion Road. I worked with John quite a bit on my side of the road, okay? And we got a, lowest grade as we could possibly get, the distance along the road. But I've got the ten-acre parcel, or the two five-acre parcels, which I can't reach the back of the land with, with tile because of the height of the culvert, or, uh, the height of the road tile. I can't reach the low spots, they're on the back of my property. I know it's got gravity feed, as normal water does, but there's no way I can rid that area of the mosquito environment that's back there. And yet, you're charging me thirty dollars for, or five, or, yeah, thirty dollars for both five-acre sections. That's sixty dollars. I mean, even if you charged me three dollars for the ten acres, would be, you know, it's, it's, there's no way I can access that water back there. And it's not doing me any good. I, I, you know, the ditch improvement was great. And we did as much as we could along the road, fall-wise. But even with the fall that he put in, which was two, two percent, or two, two inches per hundred, I can't reach that low spot in the back, even no matter how I try. And I'd be in excess for that cleaning of the ditch, which doesn't affect me because my water doesn't even go there. But I'm willing to, you know, pit, do my share for that part, but not at thirty dollars for a five-acre lot.
You do have two houses there, right?
One house. Mine, mine is only, the house that I live on is a reduced rate because of the watershed. You're only, uh, a matter of a couple acres of my house that goes to the watershed. Now, the other two properties, which is right next door, adjoining my property, there's no way I can get the tile back there to them to even, you know, drain them. They had to come up six inches because of the water line.
Do they both have houses on them, though?
No, just the ones that have houses on them.
But I show one, I show three lots.
Three lots.
Twelve point eight five, five point three, and five point one.
Right, the five point one and five point three. Well, five point three, I could probably get to the low spot. The five point one, I can't.
Okay, so you're saying that it's not fair to pay the five point one because it's not, there's no benefit?
I'm not, uh, I can't reach it to do me any good.
All right, and John said you guys have been working hand in hand on this one, trying to figure it out?
Yeah, we discussed it, the angle of the road, because it's been a problem for years.
Well, the problem is, under ten acres is thirty dollars, so we, we have the watershed divide going through as five acres, but it's still thirty dollars, he has houses on them.
The one house, the one property has house on it, the other one doesn't.
Both the five acres do?
No, yeah, just the one five acre.
What about the...
The other properties...
What about the twelve point eight, does that have a...
That's exactly where I live, okay?
Oh, there's no houses on the five point three or the five point one?
The one, the five point one has a house, the five point three doesn't. I think that's the way it is.
See, we show the five one having one, the five three two.
No, no house on that property, this must be an old photo.
That's the five.
That's the ninety-nine area.
Which one is that, man?
I can't read it.
Yeah, oh, oh, six apparently doesn't have a house on it, so we'll reduce that to the, we could reduce that to the three dollars an acre.
Now, that would include the ten acres, both, you'd charge both pieces together?
This, this would become three dollars an acre, so it'd be fifteen, thirty, and eight.
So, you're talking about an assessment of thirty-eight, thirty-one, or the...
We're, we're talking about two assessments that I can't even, well, you cleaning the ditch helps, but I can't get to the back of these properties with the grade along the road.
The front of them drains, obviously.
Right, the front drains. There's not enough fall from the back of that property to the road tile.
But is that the only advantage to the property? Is there another advantage besides the, the, um...
The one piece of property has a house on it, which...
No, but that wasn't my question, no.
Okay.
There's, there's road drainage in the front.
Right.
Uh, there is drainage provided, absent you're being able to access it from the back, is there not?
That's a different watershed.
Not sure I asked.
And that's another very big problem, okay? We, we've got three foot of water back there in that ditch, and there's no way I can do it because it's a property, private property. I asked the people, see if I could get my backhoe in there and pull some of them trees out so I at least get drainage, but I haven't had a reply yet.
John, you sug- you suggested reducing the one?
Yeah, on our map, we have the watershed line going through the properties. That's why he can't reach the back of his property to bring it to the front. And, uh, oh, oh, six, we show is having a house on it. He says it doesn't have a house on it, and we would only charge him for just what's in the watershed, which looks like probably an acre or less, huh?
Well, even this one here, you're charging me for the whole property line, and there's only maybe an acre in there.
That's because it has...
That's the benefit with the...
It's because it has a house on it.
Okay, guy.
Ten acres or less is thirty bucks.
I understand, okay.
That's what we kept through the whole thing, so we...
So, we're talking about two assessments, then?
So, see, oh, oh, six would go to one acre benefited, no house, so that would be three bucks.
Three dollars, okay, and then, uh, um...
Oh, oh, seven would have the house, that would be thirty dollars, and oh, oh, one, five would be two point seven seven, would be eight point three one.
Okay.
But you, you can see what you're saying, here's your water.
Forty-one, three eight nine forty, three nine forty, forty-one, thirty-one.
John, here's your watershed, you got it, more. All this year, I can't touch that. I don't have enough fall with the road. Most of my property's gonna stay wet and mosquito-fested back there.
It's thirty dollars.
Yeah, thirty dollars for the one little piece, one acre, you know?
Two or five, it's still a thirty dollar.
And the project really isn't finished yet, is it?
Not quite, no, but it's, I think the benefits are, the new culverts under the road and, uh, tiles are in, so... Should've helped a lot with that rain, man.
Up here, yes, down here, no. That's all I've got to say, appreciate the time.
Oh, thank you. Three parcels.
Just three parcels.
Three dollars.
Sir.
Three dollars.
Thirty dollars and eight thirty-one.
You're next, yes, sir.
Me?
Yes, would you approach, Mike?
Mitch, uh, Zirker.
Uh, wait, just a minute, please.
We got a little confusion up here.
John, back up.
Go ahead.
The assessments are gonna be three, thirty, and eight thirty-one, am I correct, or is that, uh...
Yeah, that's correct.
So, it's like, it's gonna be three dollar total?
Three dollars on oh, oh, six.
On oh, oh, six is gonna be one acre benefited at three dollars, that'll be three dollars. And oh, oh, seven will be thirty dollars because it's got a house on it.
Right.
Oh, one, five will be eight dollars and thirty-one cents.
Okay, you got that, then? Thank you.
Sorry about that.
Yes, sir.
Uh, Mitch Zirker, one 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 oh nine Vermillion Road.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, sir.
Mitch Zirker.
Thank you.
They greatly improved it from what it was. The problem that I had to begin with was the water coming from the north end of my property in a field. When they went and did the tile work under the road and everything, they put the culvert exactly where it was to begin with. Well, I don't think a whole hundred-acre field should run across two people's properties to get to a, to a catch basin is gonna fix the problem. They're either gonna have to take it in that north field more, or it ain't gonna help anybody. Everybody's still gonna have water sitting. I mean, the drainage problem is a lot better than it was, but I don't think it should run across two people's property to get to a catch basin. So, either they're gonna have to take it in that north field next to me, or it ain't gonna do us no good on that road anyway. And I brought pictures in, if you wanna see it from the last rain.
I'll, I'll see what John...
Still that water?
Oh, shit. Can't be like that. This field.
Did it affect your house, or just the...
Well, this is, this is Mrs. Norris here where it came across, or... They gotta take it in that field.
Well, we're gonna turn this up to that field and rock it to get into the pipe.
Yeah, because what it does is it gathers in this field, that's a pond, and then it just comes across all everybody's yards. You can see, I just tore that tile right out of the end of that thing. So, if we can do that...
It's not, not completely finished, there's a twenty-four-inch pipe that comes up. We're supposed to go into the field and then be rocked into it.
See, I didn't know.
And that, that wasn't completely finished yet by the garage, apparently.
So, there's still work to be done, and when this work is completed, it might address your issue, then, is that what I'm hearing?
Well, yeah, I can't have it running across the property all the time.
If, if not, we'll keep in touch with, uh, Mr. Zirker and do whatever, whatever it takes to fix it.
Okay.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming in.
Down.
Okay.
I have some pictures here, I'd like...
Would you please go, give your name first?
Pictures over here.
Okay.
You know what I'm talking about? This is the, uh, this is the area I'm referring, you know? That's one of the...
Back here?
Yep, that, that, the woods, see, oh?
Yeah.
This is where the screen...
And it's what, green?
You can see that stuff to lay out, and this is what I've maintained since nineteen fifty-four. How you doing, John?
Pretty good, how you doing?
Uh, this, uh, this assessment, uh, it doesn't bother me one bit. But, uh, I've cleaned this creek out. It used to be the creek itself had, uh, had it twisting down through the property south of hundred and thirteen, and then it went down along John Bourne's, what was it, on the, uh, east side, John, of your property? And, uh, I, I like what they've done up there, but the biggest problem is, if you look where the trees are overhanging, they're dead, and they're overhanging the, the creek itself. And I've went up there two or three times and pulled limbs out of there because they've dropped down. Now, my biggest request is this. I'd like to see more of that wooded stuff, not the big, not the oak or the maple, big trees, but this small brush be cleaned back about fifteen feet from the creek. So, when it falls, it don't fall back into the creek and impede the flow of water. Now, I, I cleaned all that out in nineteen fifty-six and fifty-seven, and with the Osage orange and the briars and everything else. And as the pictures show, you can see it's been maintained.
That's the difference, you're saying you want us to spend more money, or...
No, I'm not asking for more money, I'm just, I, all I'm trying to do is get those, that dead stuff out of there so it don't fall in the creek.
That'll be taken care of as part of the, part of the maintenance fee, and we can get ahold of Mr. Miletty while we're doing the maintenance work and take care of that for him.
Yeah, I like what has been done because that water, I've seen it when it come up, and it's about two-thirds of the way up to the top of the bank, and it flows real well. The only bad thing about it is, the state, one of these days, is gonna complain because the culvert is not big enough to take it.
Thanks, Dominic. Anyone else? Okay, thank you. I would move to approve it as stands with the exception of the oh, oh, six, and reduce that to three dollars.
Um, second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye. Thank you all for coming in, appreciate it. For you guys.
We're only at twenty-two?
We're gonna be at twenty-two as soon as I try to get back organized. Yeah, number twenty-two.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Number twenty-two, under Workforce Development Agency, approve and enter into various purchase of service contracts between Lorain County Workforce Development Agency and Lorain County Board of Commissioners effective July first, two thousand and three, through June thirty, two thousand and four. With Lorain County Community College Public Service Institute in the amount of two hundred thousand to operate a program to serve sixty-four out-of-school older youths in basic academic attainment and provide directly employable job readiness training, job placement coaching, onsite workplace monitoring, career preparation, and supportive services, resource connections. Boys and Girls Club of Lorain County in the amount of one hundred and twenty-five thousand to provide services to thirty-two youth between the ages of fourteen and twenty-one through various organizations, Keystone Club, Job Ready, Career Launch, Plato, and Mentoring. Lorain County Community College Bridges to Success in the amount of two hundred and seventy-five thousand...
Excuse me, excuse me, sir, can you please go out in the hall and discuss the issue?
Can't hear you. There we go. I'll help you out.
Okay, go ahead.
To provide services to ninety youth between the ages of sixteen to twenty-one, the goal of the Bridges to Success Program is to attract, retrain, graduate, and secure gainful employment for participants. L Central Services Socialist, Inc., in the amount of one hundred and eighty-five thousand to operate the Project Conquest Program. Project Conquest will target seventy youth who exhibit severe barriers to academic achievement and gainful employment. Youth participating in Project Conquest will experience academic and career growth, creative learning modules, opportunities to intern and participate in the employment experience, and will learn through hands-on applications to negotiate barriers which have ham, hampered their academic and career growth. Workforce Institute in Lorain County in the amount of one million, five hundred and twenty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-four dollars to continue to operate the employment network, Lorain County One-Stop Career Center. The Workforce Institute will also provide services to the youth council for providing objective assessment services, developing individual service plans for youth participants, case management, and job search assistance.
So, move.
Second discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Under Children's Services, twenty-three, authorize the reappointment of Adella Johnson as a member to Lorain County Children's Services Board effective July first, two thousand and three, through June thirty, two thousand and seven.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Number twenty-four, under the engineer, amend Resolution ninety-eight dash seven eighty to prevent property known as six four three three Oberlin Road, Amherst Township, being sub lot number twenty-two in the Bechtel subdivision, to tie into the Oberlin Road Airport Sanitary Sewer System as an individual lot separate from sub lot twenty-four. All other provisions and conditions set forth in Resolution eighty-nine seven eighty shall remain in full force and effect.
So, move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator?
No reports are coming this morning.
Mr. Anis, Assistant County Prosecutor?
Uh, I just need to have a, an executive session with the commissioners to discuss a matter of pending litigation.
Commissioners report? I have nothing this morning. Commissioner Blair?
Thank you, since it's almost noon, I won't say too much, but I would just like to, um, say that I was at a National Association of Regional Council's conference in Pittsburgh, and I brought back lots of good material. I'm forwarding it to the Community Development Director and the County Administrator, talking about innovative financing and, um, maybe some projects that could help us to further, um, the things that we're trying to accomplish in Lorain County. So, I'll be sharing my information with them, thank you.
Hey, thank you.
I have none.
I have none. Old business? I have none. Commissioner Blair?
I have none.
Just what's on here.
Number one, approve and enter into contract between Lorain County Board of Commissioners and the City of Olmstead Falls to utilize a portion of the city sanitary sewer system due to the Columbia West River Treatment Plant in Columbia Station being abandoned and redirect the wastewater to the southerly wastewater treatment plant operated by Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District. Fifty-six thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars tap-in fee is required from Lorain County prior to connection, but will be recovered through assessments when construction of the lift station and forest main is completed.
This is on hold, you were checking on something? Thank you, Mr. Anis.
A couple things, Commissioners. Originally, uh, a resolution was passed by Olmstead Falls and submitted to us. We've had a number of changes from that proposed agreement. They aren't any big issues, just some things to, uh, protect the county. So, we now have a new version of that agreement. I would like to at least get an indication from the Commissioners whether this is now a satisfactory agreement because before we go back to Olmstead Falls and have them go through, they have more complex procedures to pass something, have them go through all that and then change it again. We, we'd like to at least come up with a version, uh, that meets the acceptance of the Commissioners. So, so, I'd like to either, uh, at least get a commitment from the Commissioners that, that this agreement as it is, is acceptable with you, or go ahead and pass a resolution approving it, and then we will resubmit it to Olmstead Falls. Form-wise, we just, uh, straightened out a few things as far as the billing procedure, and we put in some provisions there that there's no obligation on the county if we do not go forward with this. In fact, there is no obligation whatsoever for the county to proceed on it. This, this just sets up that if the county does proceed with it, we will have access to the Olmstead Falls, uh, sewer system. And then, there were some other questions regarding the rates and charges. I think that's Mr. Kearney's ballpark.
Mr. Kearney? Were those rates reduced, any?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
The rates would not change, I, I think the question is the assessments that benefit any property owners. The cost is generally in that neighborhood of two hundred and thirty to two hundred and forty thousand for the total job. Nineteen benefited property owners.
But that would be six hundred and thirty-eight dollars and some change per year for twenty years.
Total assessment, depending on how they wanna pay that, could be the equal amount because they're all receiving the same benefit. It's a lift station and a forest main entering into what we call NEOSORT, Northeast Ohio Regional Sewer District.
That, could that change at any time?
Very much so.
If other residents tie in, then this changes? If other residents tie in, then this changes?
No, it'll change by the time I apply for grants.
Higher or lower?
Grants.
Reduced or, I'm sorry, will that reduce the assessment?
Yes, ma'am.
Or increase it?
No, the grants would reduce the cost of the assessment.
Okay.
Dramatically.
Okay, that's what I need to know.
Was there an issue though with people across the street benefiting from this tapping in, not paying for it?
It's only benefits nineteen people.
I know, I know, but down the road, I mean, we can handle more than nineteen homes with this, correct?
No, this is for the nineteen homes-
Right.
-that are being serviced by the small treatment facility. We call Columbia West River Treatment Plant.
But in the future, we can handle more?
We would probably require a gravity sewer. It's conceivable that they would want to tap into the forest main, but I wouldn't recommend it. It would cost them five or six thousand dollars entering into it because they would have to purchase a grinder pump. That's not the point. Gravity sewers is available, however, this design was to alleviate the benefited property owners that are entering into the Columbia West River Treatment Plant. And we found it is more economical to construct a lift station at the plant site and pump forest main to Olmstead Falls.
And you could close that plant down?
Yes.
Good.
Who's, is that?
Fall in the river pretty soon.
Alright. Now who's gonna pay for the closing of that? Is that what, you're gonna try to get more grant money and?
I don't think the abandonment much of a problem. I could probably sell it.
Oh, really?
For scrap.
Okay.
The lift station is an expense of about sixty to sixty-five thousand and I'm really strongly going to pursue Ohio Public Works Commission grants.
What was your comment? The lift station is the expense of sixty to sixty-five thousand? What are you?
Lift stations needed to pump towards Olmstead Falls, I think that estimate is sixty to sixty-five thousand for the lift station.
That's part of the-
Total design.
The new project, though?
Within, yes, yes.
And you're suggesting that you might be able to get some monies to pay for that portion of it?
Yeah, we've been fortunate so far. We've had a hundred and fifty thousand zero interest loan for Plum Creek and I received a hundred and eleven thousand dollar interest-free loan for Crestview. So I see-
The residents won't be charged for that. They're just going to be assessed on to fifty-six thousand six hundred and forty-three dollars, correct?
Well, the assessments include the construction of the lift station, the tap-ins, and the forest main construction.
So everything is in that cost?
Everything's within that two hundred and thirty to two hundred and forty thousand dollar figure. However, I plan to aggressively pursue grants before construction next year. We'll be applying September is our deadline for grant applications for Ohio Public Works. We'll receive approval hopefully within the first two months of next year.
Okay.
I'm very familiar with the criteria that is required for applying for these grants. I'm presently a member of the six-member Engineering Review Committee and I was fortunate to be re-elected president, or chairman of the District Nine Integrating Committee. So we pretty much fight for what we want and I don't think we've lost one battle yet in the last fourteen years.
You, so-
We're pretty fair in our requests.
Right, but when you're gonna ask for the, to, you're gonna try to sell it off or whatever, I mean, you're not gonna pass that cost on to the nineteen homeowners, right?
The, removal of the plant?
Right, right.
No, I, no, no, not at all.
Okay.
No, probably sell it for scrap, make some money. But we'll see.
Sanitary Engineers' Office will, right?
No, no, we'll apply for this account, trust me.
And we, I like that. And who does the sanitary engineer work for?
I know, that's awesome, though.
How much will we get out of it?
It will go back in a sanitary account.
Oh, only if we tell you, you can.
That's where it goes, I'm sure.
That was my hope, of course.
Alright. Just include us in the loop.
We never forget you.
Ah, thank you.
Okay. What, the desire of the board?
So moved.
Second. Further discussion? Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Number two, assignment of the FBO to the Airport Authority.
Guess we got a full board now. You wanna deal with it?
I believe this was put on the agenda for discussion.
Thought we were voting on it.
Well, exactly what are we voting on?
You're more-
No, I know, we know where you stand, we know where I stand. We're still waiting to see which side you wanna jump on.
Well, I don't know where anybody stands until we vote on it, but I would like to know exactly what we're voting on. Will somebody, whoever moves this issue, please let, include your-
Well, we could have discussion without a motion.
Yeah, we can do that.
Well, you can do that, but what are we voting on? What's the question?
Well, there's a request, I believe, from the Airport Authority to transfer the assets of the fixed base operator which the County Commissioner purchased and owned to the Airport Authority.
Are we talking assets or authority?
Talking about the F fix base operation, which is all the assets, the management, everything, to the Airport Authority. We had the full board here, they discussed it. I thought it was pretty well discussed.
Yes, would you like to speak?
Oh, I didn't know where we were gonna, okay.
Well, I don't quite know what the proceedings will be like. I had assumed Mr. Barth might want to be making some remarks, if indeed this is to be discussed now. I happened to have to be away at the meeting where there had been some preliminary discussion on this matter, and so perhaps some of my questions are, have already been answered. But if Mr. Barth is going to be speaking, I should certainly like to hear him first, if there's to be any discussion at all this morning.
I think that's kind of my point. I'd like to know, Mr. Barth, exactly what the board expects or what our board, I think I've had a difference from what I heard last week. It seems that they wanted something different than what I'm hearing now, and I just want to clarify. I thought that last week from, or the week before, whenever we discussed this, that they wanted the authority to negotiate for the FBO, and now I'm hearing assets and everything. So I'm very unclear. I'd like to know exactly what they want.
I heard a bunch of good mornings so far today, so I'll be the first one to say good afternoon, Commissioners.
Thank you. Thanks. Uh-oh.
Madam Chairman, members of the board, there's been considerable discussion over the past two months on the FBO and, as everybody knows here, in nineteen ninety-nine, the Commissioners, rightfully so, purchased the FBO from the private operator that was there. And they immediately entered into a very temporary management agreement, thirty-day management agreement with the Authority. We come in and we did an assessment of facilities and found out that there were some real maintenance problems there. Because of nine-eleven, the economy, business has not been good there at the FBO and we've lost probably a hundred and fifty thousand dollars since nineteen ninety-nine. We've sent numerous letters detailing the maintenance problems, maintenance issues. A study was completed on all of the facilities and it wasn't a very positive report. Now, whether you agree with the recommendations of URS who did the study, I don't think it really matters. The fact of the matter remains that they came in there with a bunch of structural engineers, electrical engineers, and kind of identified all the problems. The agreement, again, and I'll refer back to the management agreement that was in place, is very insatiable and complicated. Every time we need something, we have to come back to the Commissioners. We, somebody approached us and says they would like to take over management of the FBO and we're willing to look at or improve all of the facilities, pay us a fee and pay us a percentage of their gross revenues. It was a pretty good agreement that was hammered out with the Authority. To make it work effectively and efficiently, the Airport Authority is asking the Commissioners to transfer ownership of all the FBO assets to the Lorraine County Regional Airport Authority. And essentially, the Commissioners would still maintain control because they control the appointments to the Board and the funding to the Authority. And that's what that discussion was about a month ago when all the Board members were here. And I think the fact that all the Board members showed up at the Commissioners' meeting, all except one, shows you how strong they feel. I mean, we deal with these problems on a daily basis and the Commissioners got a whole county to deal with. We're very close to the problems and talked about it and this is the only way it could work effectively.
The Commissioners paid one point seven eight million dollars in nineteen ninety-nine to buy the FBO, which happened apparently to have had little or no oversight and the conditions had indeed apparently deteriorated greatly, as Mr. Barth has said, and will require a good amount of money to refurbish or replace or whatever may be needed. If the Commissioners transfer ownership of all the FBO assets to the Authority, doesn't this amount to the equivalent of a gift from the LC, from the Commissioners to the Board of the Authority? Which may be desirable. I wouldn't be able to make a decision on that. If, however, this is the case and this individual or this company is going to come in and give a percentage of the profits to what? To the Authority or to the Commissioners?
To the Authority.
To the Authority, then as I say, what has happened to this one point seven eight million dollars which the county did put out for that? If the problem is simply, and it probably is not, if the problem is simply that there is that thirty-day arrangement, could this arrangement not be extended so that there is not the necessity for coming back to the Commissioners all of the time for approval? The fact of the matter is that while the Commissioners do appoint the Board, that does not really offer much oversight or control, and I would be very interested to know what oversight might there be if this material, if this, if these assets are transferred so that you don't repeat what happened with Midwest Air? Is there going to be a contract? What will be the terms of the contracts? And as I say, what sort of oversight might the Board still offer? To say you appoint the Board simply means that it's after decisions have been made by and large that something can be discussed if the Airport Authority Board has, maintains complete control over the FBO. What, if there is such a transfer and there, I presume, would be some sort of contract, would there be any regular ongoing reports from the Airport Authority back to the Commissioners? Would there be any recourse if any action were taken which the Commissioners, for good reason, did not think desirable for the public interest or from the county's interest? And as I say, what if any contract terms might there be? The other aspect of it is, would the Commissioners have any say in who this person or corporation or entity would be, which would be taking over, which would be leased, leasing the FBO? And most importantly, and I guess this is what really puzzles me, from a business point of view, given all that needs to be done at the airport and the very fine plans which the Airport Board has in mind for the use of the airport, what is going to be in it for the person to whom the FBO is leased? Because presumably there will be a considerable amount of money having to be invested in the facilities and the equipment and so forth at the FBO before there is any profit to be shared with anybody at all. And I, I just find myself wondering if there is something in the future for the airport which makes it worthwhile for a private organization or company to want to take over the FBO, to lease the FBO. Maybe the county should look into what exactly that future would be. It might be worthwhile for the county to retain the FBO. As a business decision, I think that's a very interesting aspect.
Thanks, Elizabeth. I can get on some of yours if the other two would like to speak, but right now we get two, I can't see you, but you're back there. Right now we get two types of financials. We get a financial prepared by the Airport on the Authority itself and we get financials on the FBO. What's been going on is almost a co-mingling of assets between the two, so you don't really get a true feeling of the airport. You have Airport Authority using their money to run the airport, to actually run the FBO, and I'm looking at, just give us one, one, one set of books, because, you know, there's just too many excuses coming back and forth when you got two sets of books. There's nothing, not to say two sets of books are wrong, it's just they're trying to do it the right way, but they're using employees from one place, they're helping out the FBO over here. You know, the business point of view, hey, from what I've heard, they're not basing on gross net profit, they're doing it on gross income, which is a lot better. If you can get any deal with based on gross instead of net, it's a lot better deal. The funding, we control the funding. We might appoint the Authority, and like you said, we might not have control of that, but we do control the funding of the airport and I believe they voted on that today. They got their allotment of sixteen thousand, I believe, Jim?
Yes.
And so, we control the funding of the airport on a monthly basis. They get their allotment from us. You know, and whether or not the one point eight million dollar investment, that's an issue I'd rather not discuss myself. We were here before, talked about it. Some people feel that was a good investment, some people do not. From what I heard after the meeting, they said, "We wish you were here because I think you would have enjoyed that meeting when we had the full board here." A lot, a lot of information was going back and forth at that meeting. The issue I see, it's very, you know, I can, I can break it down a couple ways. We can do, the Board, we can actually cancel the management agreement as Commissioners want. We can just cancel the management agreement and we can go out for bids and we can be managing it. I personally have a problem with that, that's just me.
What would your problem be with that?
I don't think government should be in the business of FBOs.
Okay, thank you.
So Commissioners can hire the FBO employees and run the FBO. That's what we can do, which I already told you, how I felt about that. But we may also want to disband the Airport Board. And that's okay with the members, from what I've read, because they're afraid of the personal liability they have out there in that building. It's pretty sad. I mean, you, the condition of that building. I've seen the URS, I disagree with their opinion. Well, maybe they're right, you know, we need to spend eight million dollars on the airport. I don't see us spending eight million dollars on an airport. A private business will come in and, and repair and probably build a new fixed base operations. But there's a difference between private business coming in and spending money to build versus a government going in to build. Just go downtown, take a look at the federal building in Cleveland if you want to see how much money, you know, how government spends money versus private business. There's, there's different ways we can deal with this. We can actually take control of the FBO, we can, we can do the bids ourselves as a Commissioners and have someone manage it for us. I don't think we can go on the same path we're going. I don't think the Board, Airport Authority wants that liability that's going on out there right now. Or we can dump a million dollars into the airport ourselves right now and put the Band-Aid that the airport needs. I was just trying to find an avenue in which, okay, how do we fix the airport? And what, and I think what really got the ball going is when their funding was cut, like everybody else's. And they know, they knew they couldn't survive on the funding that they got. So they've been working for the last six months trying to come up with different ways to make the airport work financially with the allotted funds that the Commissioners have approved for them for the year. And so they've come back and forth with us through Mr. Barth, and I think we finally hit a, I don't know, hit a, hit a standstill and thought it'd be best to have the Board come in here and have a public discussion, and which we did. I thought our positions were pretty clear that day, you know.
Clear.
Yeah. Your position, I mean, my position was fine, yours was fine, and I think Commissioner Basie needed some more time, so. And that was, that's kind of where we're at at night, but.
Excuse me, but I think it needs to be kept into the thinking of everybody involved. I'm, I'm sorry, am I not speaking into this correctly?
Well, some of us are a little hard of hearing, Elizabeth.
I'm sorry.
Since you do it to us, I'll do it to you.
Usually I have been told I'm talking too loud, as a matter of fact.
I don't think so, but.
I think it has to be kept into the thinking about this matter, that this is a county airport, that it serves very important public functions. It's not just a private entity. The idea of perhaps, well, that's another matter, let me come back to in a minute. I understand that part of the funding, I believe I understand that part of the funding difficulty they are, that- they are, that the airport is having, is because the monthly funding for the FBO has not been forthcoming from the county. And while that would not help to solve their budget problem altogether, I think it would have helped to alleviate some of it. The downturn in the economy and the September 11th situation obviously has had great impacts on the airport, which may or may not change. These are all very great generalities, of course. Your notion of disbanding, your, your suggestion of perhaps even considering disbanding the authority is a very interesting one, and that would raise the question of, to what, then what, and so forth and so on, and would warrant, I would think, considerable discussion as well. I, I just, as I say, do consider the idea of privatizing something as important as that, something that needs a good deal of consideration and not necessarily only from the business economics point of view.
If I might. I, I think we cannot get the FBO and the airport confused. The airport will remain a public use airport. And properly, I didn't interrupt you. It will remain a public use airport. There is no other airport that I know of where the airport runs the FBO. It normally runs the way it ran years ago before the commissioners bought it. Where you have an airport that's a public use airport and there's a private entity running the business of the airport, the FBO. The FBO provides fueling, they provide aircraft maintenance, they provide flight instruction, aircraft charter, a number of different things. So, like I says, the commissioners, from everything I read and everything I've seen, the commissioners did the right thing in 1999 and bought that. We've tried to manage it since 1999 on a monthly agreement. It's been extremely difficult. It cannot continue. I want to get back to the norm and the way it should be. When I came here, somebody asked me, "Are you bringing?" And, and I wasn't here back then, there was, there was another FBO operator millionaire. They says, "Are you're coming from Burke, are you bringing millionaire?" I says, "No, absolutely not." I've been very truthful with the authority and with the board and very open with everyone. And I told, I, I said back then, "If the time comes when I think we need to go private, I will say that." And I've told the board, the airport board that, and I'm telling the county commissioners that right now. It's the only way to go, it's the only way to make this airport viable.
Bottom line, as far as I'm concerned, is money, is it not? Money is the bottom line. That's why you're making that suggestion, right?
Well, yeah, because we took his money away.
Yeah, bottom line to us and bottom line to the county. I think we could reduce the county subsidy over the next five years, and I gave you a projection over the next five years, that we could reduce the county subsidy of the airport.
I appreciate that, but, but the bottom line is money. That's why you're making this proposal to us at this point, is it not?
It's not the only reason. It's to grow Lorraine County Regional Airport is, is what it is, and make it have a true economic impact to the, to the county. You know, and, and one of the other reasons is the fact that, that you need, at a very minimum, a million dollars to sink into that building. We cannot continue to run that building, though, in the shape it's in, simply. You know, it's, it's, as Commissioner Moore said, it's, it's either do this or give us a million, give us a million dollars to fix it, we'll get you to go. I just don't know what we're going to do this winter. I don't know if we could survive the winter.
Mike, I liked what I heard you say, to reduce the county's portion of the funding over the next five years. I like that. Please make a note of that in the journal.
That's the only reason why.
That's what I, I asked at the last meeting, we discussed that.
And I gave you numbers, I gave you projections, you know, and as far as, you know, since, I mean, the legal details could be worked out how it's done, you know, that could be worked out with our counsel and Mr. Ennis. And as far as the county giving a gift to the authority, it would merely be funds invested in the airport, like you've been investing for years and years. I think I've been very, like I says upfront, with the county commissioners, I've been sending you things that you've never got before, Commissioner Vassie, and I think you've always told me that. I, I keep you abreast of everything that's going on. So, I mean, I'm here as an executive director of an airport and representing Lorraine County Regional Airport Authority to tell you that I think that this, and they think that this is the only way to go right now.
I appreciate your position, Mike. I appreciate what you do for the airport, but I'm going to go back to my comments about the bottom line is money, and that's the, the whole reason why we're where we are. And there was a proposal by Commissioner Moore earlier this year for the Board of Commissioners to go out and seek a private company to run the FBO. And after that proposal was put forth, it was then, if my memory serves me correctly, and I believe I'm very accurate, it was then that the Airport Authority decided that maybe they, they would jump on board, so to speak, and suggest that that was the better way to go. I think you're incorrect, although I might not be up to date. Valparaiso, Indiana, where we were taken after the FBO was purchased or in the process and prior to Commissioner Moore becoming a commissioner, they have a four-person board that operates their FBO. At least, that's the way it was a couple of years ago. You talked about the 30-day agreement. We've operated under this 30-day agreement since 1999 when we purchased it. I am not in favor of turning over this entity to the Airport Authority Board. The Airport Authority Board meets once a month. This Board of Commissioners meets every week. Your board said that to us when we were here, and I appreciate what the Airport Authority has done. I believe that there are other ways to do this, and I am not sold that the only way to do it is to just turn over the FBO to the Airport Authority. I have some serious concerns about the terminology in the proposal that was presented first to us and then to us through the Airport Authority Board. And I find Elizabeth's comments interesting. She talked about the future, and it might be to the county's benefit to maintain it and operate it, and I think that's the way we ought to go.
Did you want to comment further?
Just, just very quickly to reiterate, I, I, I know Mr. Barth has always been very warm and open with me, and I too appreciate that. But I continue to wonder about what is in it for the entity that would presumably take over, and more importantly, what oversight could the county commissioners still retain on a very close and ongoing basis, were this to be transferred to another entity?
We would be furnished reports, either quarterly, annually, semi-annually.
I'll give you all the reports you want.
We'd get them now.
If you turn this over, I would even suggest that the commissioners could approve it. If there, in fact, is an agreement between the authority and another entity, I would, we could put a provision in there that, that the commissioners would have to approve that Before they could enter into it.
Approve the agreement between the private entity and the board?
And the authority, yeah.
Okay, and include semi-annual reports?
Whatever, yeah. We, I mean, there's annual reports, we'll give it to you semi-annual.
You know, my position isn't, the thing that has changed, which Commissioner Blair's pointing to, is when we, I call it shake the tree. When I made the statement a couple of months ago, and I think Mike had to run up to the newspapers with some of the board members to try to defend the position that I took, which was, we spent $2.1 million on purchasing the FBO. We funded another 2.8 to keep it open, or it was roughly rounded off to 4.6. Some of the board members took offense to my statements, and that's when the ball got rolling. I said we should go out and take some bids. You know, sometimes I say things to stir the pot, and I think I did a good job this time, because this is, we had a lot of people coming to the board meeting, talking about the airport. My understanding, because I was not here, that it only took seven minutes of public discussion to spend $1.8 million on a FBO. I, I like the fact that this has taken over a month or two to discuss what we should do with the airport. Personally, I like the idea of the authority, because you have seven members on the board that is appointed by us. If they don't, I mean, I, I can tell you right now, you can talk to anybody at transit, they don't, there's a board there, they're not too happy with what's being said, but I think there is controls in place for the commissioners for organizations like these. And our commission, and our control is the purse strings. If we're not happy with what we see out there, we control it through the purse strings. Because the Airport Authority cannot operate without the airport, now what, without the commissioners. Now, one day, they might be able to say, "We don't need you anymore, commissioners, because our FBO is making enough money where we don't need you, so guess what? We might be a standalone." Okay, who knows? I'm not going to talk about the future. I'm talking about an issue right now, which is this is costing the taxpayers a lot of money to have right now. And I'm looking at different avenues so that it doesn't cost the taxpayers as much money to operate this airport. That's why I felt it'd be appropriate to have the Airport Authority manage the FBO, sign all the assets over. From what the discussions I've had, is that they've already got, the individuals that's coming in have offered to purchase the assets, which means we won't have to fund the airport, because I think they're still short a couple hundred thousand to finish off the year, which, hey, you know what, you're on your own. What, what can you do to make it happen? Well, they found, they found ways to, to make it happen. Mike came in here two weeks ago, I think, and somehow got 56,000 out of us, just through some accounting methods. So I think they're doing a good job at trying to figure it out. And I don't know, I'm getting to a point where we keep talking, keep talking, and I'm at a point now where I thought our positions were pretty well solid. I, I'm, I'm happy with the fact that if the authority makes, the authority will make the right decision, and I'm happy with the fact that to let them, allow them to make the decision on what to do with the FBO and hand it over to them. If they're just making mistakes, I, I'm, they're going to hear it. They're going to hear it when I start voting no to fund them. And that's the control the commissioners have. That's the control that we have.
A lot of water rolls down the dam between the time you fund them and then you fund them again.
Well, I...
There is no control.
Well, I...
There is no control. You give them the money and then they operate according to their determination. And I'm not suggesting that you've operated improperly at all. I have long been a supporter of the Airport Authority, but I think that this is the wrong way to go. I think it's giving something away without any real guarantees that you're going to get anything in return. County can do it itself.
See, I don't think the county can do it.
Well, I think they can, so I guess we'll find out. We're going to find out one way or the other.
One way or the other today, I guess. So that's kind of my little, getting dry here, probably need some more water, but I've been talking for two months on this. So I, I mean, I'm in, I'm in support of just handing the FBO over to the Airport Authority, give them a shot. If they don't, I don't know how difficult it is to, I mean, the airport, I mean, do we have, we still have the ability to, I think it's a little bit more difficult, Jim, isn't it, to make them a county agency, if they decide to, is it more difficult to do that?
I'm aware of the regulations pertaining to transit. I'm not well-versed in the ones with the...
Authority.
With the authority. Jerry looked into those a couple of years ago, he would be better able to answer that question. Sorry.
Well, they're, they're a separate agency. As you indicated, through the control of funding...
Loud or thin.
Okay. We do control their funding, and if the commissioners just do not fund them, they're not going to be able to continue to exist at this point in time. Should they operate, as you indicated, to the point where they are self-sufficient, then they'll be able to go on their own.
Okay.
I, I did want to mention one thing. We talked about the sale of, of assets and so forth. There are also some liabilities and obligations, subleases and that sort of thing that are attendant to the FBOs. I would assume that if they're taking over the FBO, that the airport would be taking over all those things also.
All the liabilities.
And employees.
Okay, the chair would entertain a motion?
How do you do a motion on this? Let's see, what's the old business, what's the old business saying? Assignment of FBO to the Airport Authority, that's, I don't know if that's the right motion to read or what, but that's, I mean, you're talking about a very legal and intense issue here that...
You sure are.
Well, certainly, certainly anything we would do is going to have to involve development of a detailed and complex contract, so anything...
Would be contingent upon all of it.
We do at this point is going to have to require a, you know, a formal presentation of a contract later. It's, it's, at this point, if you were going to do anything, I suppose it would be a resolution to propose to, to take a proposal and, and proceed to negotiate the sale of, of the FBO assets to the Airport Authority.
I couldn't do just, okay. I don't want to look at it as a negotiation. I mean, I'm looking at just assigning it over to them. If we start negotiating, it could be another six months.
But that would be contingent upon all the legal pieces.
Can we just, can I pass a resolution saying a assignment of an FBO to the Airport Authority? And then, can we revisit the, we can't approve the, well, we still have to approve the contract.
Right. I guess that's all I'm just saying, is, I certainly wouldn't just say we approve all the terms and conditions of this letter, because this letter's just an outline, so if you want to make a motion to, um, uh, transfer, I suppose we could deem it as a sale, because the consider, some of the consideration that would come back would be the, at least, I suppose I'm proposing, would be the assumption of obligations and that, in and of itself could, you know, sufficient consideration. So if you want to deem it a motion to transfer or sell the FBO operations and assets to the Airport Authority, subject to the submission of a contract agreeable to the Board of Commissioners. Suppose that would get the ball rolling.
Did you get all that, Teresa?
Yeah.
You going to help with that, Jerry? Just how you just said it?
She's got it, I'll take it.
That would do it.
I would support that, as a motion.
Okay, I'll second it. Discussion? Any further discussion here?
Would you want to put any kind of time limit that this is to be completed in three or four months?
Thirty days.
Thirty days is pretty tight, Commissioner.
Mike, shouldn't take that long, should it?
I mean, all the agreements between the county and the previous owner were there, so my thought, my thought would be to, to, for the, something like the authority purchasing for a dollar the assets to the FBO and just transfer that agreement over, the way you signed the agreement from, from Midwest over to the county, just to sign the agreement over from, from the county to the FBO, I mean, to the authority. And again, our counsel, Mr. Ennis, could work all the details out, you know, I don't understand all the legal details of it, but I think the general idea is for the...
I'm worried about the construction time, if you guys...
I'm worried about that, too.
I don't want to see the place shut down.
You don't even have, I was just throwing that out, if you want, you don't have to put a time.
I don't think we need a time constraint. Leave it at this. Aye.
Ms. Vassie. I believe the improvements need to be done, and the residents deserve better than what's out there right now. And we have a board out there that has collective experience and knowledge, which would be very beneficial, and I think that's more than what this board can offer. So I would move, I would say aye. Ms. Blair?
I'll say no, and I'll say that the Airport Authority has had four years since we turned that over to do something, may, wonderful with it, and hasn't been accomplished, and now it's going, no, absolutely not.
Now, they have a means, though. They may have someone that can assist them.
They could have had the means through the county itself. I, I was a follow-up to...
Of the follow-up to my comments, the bottom line is money, okay? Could have done it ourselves.
Number three, under Old Business still?
Yep. Sorry.
You want to keep going?
I was like, I thought it was number four. Sorry, go ahead.
Discuss the relocation location of the Board of Elections.
Jim? Want to talk about this?
No.
Okay, I can go. You went out and did some, you did some work on the buildings that we paid 1.2 for? And you did, didn't you do a bid for, order for an architect?
I have a qualification proposals on, on my desk.
What do you get, let's do this. What do you think the issue is here on the Board of Election Commissioners? Do you think it's, do you want to have a discussion on combining them, or a discussion on moving them out over to a, to these buildings that we bought, or?
I thought we were going to meet with the Board of Elections to discuss this issue. That's the way the last discussion transpired, as far as my memory serves me. And I don't believe that the clerk has been able to establish the meeting as yet, due to various schedules. So that's where I thought we were.
So I don't, I don't think we need to discuss it with them. I think, I don't think anything's going to happen unless we do it. We're funding them with what? I don't even know what the rent is anymore. You, Jim? It's gotta be like nine grand a month now. Because it's been going, it was one of those month-to-months that went up every three to four months, or every six months?
We're over a hundred thousand dollars between the two buildings.
Right, and we could, we could actually build a brand-new...
Good, let's do it.
Let's build a brand-new building over here.
I second the motion.
Wow. Wow. I'm getting a little emotional today, this is kind of...
Not at all, you're getting response to your comment, okay?
Wow, okay, then let's go for it. Let's do this, how about the old train station? Put it in there.
That's not a new building.
But we can remodel that.
Well, that's not what you said.
Oh, wow, I thought I had a second, I'm sorry.
I did, to building a new building, right?
Well, then, okay, well, I think in order to, what I was looking at, to fund a new building like that, over there by the property that we own, as commissioners, by the train station, it would, to bond out, let's just hypothetically say, because I've been looking at the construction costs of a building like that, which is similar to a post office, which is roughly ninety dollars to a hundred and ten, depending what you're, you know, what you want. I mean, you're looking at two and a half million dollars. The debt service and two hundred, two and a half million dollars to finance it is the same that we're paying for rent, except we own. But if we try to build something new on a building that everything I've heard so far needs to be torn down, I'd rather make something more in style with the turn-of-the-century look with the train station, kind of have something built there for the Board of Elections.
Are you suggesting, Terry, what's there to...
Yep.
After we build a new building, of course. Because we have...
Well, no, you have to, well, yeah, you have to build a new building.
Well, we do have to keep the people operational while we're doing this.
Well, what you have to do, I think, is you have to, we have to make a decision, I think, on what we're going to do, which is starts out with hiring somebody else to come to us and tell us, here, here's the pros and cons of either rehabbing the building we have over there, which I, even though we may think it doesn't need to be done, we might need somebody to tell us that. I don't know why, but that's what happens.
Do you have any figures?
What?
Do you have any figures?
I'm going to stop you from walking around over there.
No, I, okay, but you're, you're...
Have you read the letters of architects?
You're ready to do something with this, but give us some figures. What's the cost going to be to remodel? Versus the cost to...
We don't have to make that decision today.
Demolish?
Yeah, we don't have to make that decision today.
I know, but why are we keep talking about it? Give us some figures. If you're, if you're presenting something, give me some figures. Give me something in black and white that I can see and think about.
Well...
This is exactly what you asked me when it came to solid waste and the recycle center.
That's fine, I don't want to go there, though.
You didn't want to hear about it until I gave you something in black and white. Now I'm asking you for the same thing.
Well, that's fine, I got it.
Please, give it to me.
But that's not the issue. The issue now is, are we going, Jim's sitting here treading water for the last six months, or I don't know how many months it's been, because the three of us can't decide to tell him which way to go, which is, do we want to build new? Do we want to remodel a building that we purchased, and now we don't know what we're going to do with it until we hear from the board? I say there's three of us, I say the three of us make the decision for the Board of Elections, and tell them, you either going to have to, you're going to pay, tell the public, tell the community, you're going to keep paying rent to those two shacks they got?
Okay, why don't we do this?
Or you're going to tell them a brand-new building for the same cost?
First of all, let's...
Let them come to us then.
Okay, first of all, let's decide where we want it. Okay, once we decide where we want it, I think then we can tell Jim, get us some cost.
I'd like to have it over there where we spent the 1.2 million.
Both.
Or, I'd like to combine them and put them over there, because we spent the money. Does anybody like that idea? You were jumped on real quick last time.
I second your motion to build a new building. Okay, I did that a half an hour ago.
I didn't know I made it as a motion, so I'm still emotional over that.
I'm waiting.
Because I'm not...
Okay, you're suggesting that, to combine both Boards of Elections, correct?
Yes, yes.
Betty, what do you feel?
I think that we need to maintain a satellite office in the city of Lorraine. I think the satellite office ought to be in the St. Joseph Community, whatever it's called, that we have a vested interest in. And I think that we've talked about this for probably seven or eight years. Quite some time ago, Mr. Cordez managed to negotiate leases, so that we're renting space on a month-to-month basis.
So we could leave whenever we made a decision.
That's right. And I think that we, they ought to move forward. I'm, I'm, I really am not in favor of remodeling those two existing buildings. I, I think that we could, I don't have actual figures in front of me, but I think we'd be much better served to build a new building. And then, that's what I wanted to see.
What makes more sense, though, for Jim, so that we don't have to decide today, let's build a new building? I'd like to go that way. I think that's where we should go. And I got a second, so I guess I'm going to go that way, but, you know, I don't know if that's, like you said, is fair, because we don't have all the numbers. Now, do we let Jim come back with us with the proposal?
Oh, he'll, he'll do whatever you direct him to do.
Oh, really?
As the majority of the board. Whatever the majority of the board wants to do.
Do you know how to juggle? This is fun.
Well, we're out of the airport, because it's all plenty of time.
There you go.
Okay, if I can get someone to go along with me, I would suggest that Jim go get us some figures, and the different ways to go. In other words, if we drop that building and put a new one up, if we were to renovate that building, and also some cost if we were to put, because I think you brought this up before, so you may have some cost in the back of your mind with St. Joe's. How much space would we need? How much would that cost at St. Joe's, to have a division there, too?
Let me tell you where I think we're at. We have some pretty sound proposals on the table, with regard to getting an architect or an engineer, you have to get their qualification first on the code, then you negotiate price. We're prepared to make a recommendation with regard to the qualifications and to select a firm to go to the next level, but we didn't know what the next level was, so it would be very hard to negotiate price. These parameters will give us an idea of how to negotiate the price, so that we can make a recommendation to the board.
What parameters is that, then? What would you say?
Well, I think that they're going to have to prepare cost data on multiple options with regard to the site, new building, renovated building...
By they, who do you mean? An architect?
Architectural firm.
So we would have to hire an architect?
Oh, you, wait, I'm not, I'm not qualified to...
We can't just get someone to give us estimates, a contractor to come in and give us estimates of this many square, well, I guess, the inside and everything, too.
Well, what I got in writing already, from the, what we got, from what I've read, is a, I think every one of them said it should be torn down. I don't think anybody wanted to touch the remodeling aspect of it, maybe some of them did.
It's a mixed bag.
Yeah, it's a mix, but I, I, I like the idea of doing something that kind of like looks as turn-of-the-century, that will flow with the, with the, the terminal there, the...
Transportation center.
Well, that's, I'm sure we'll talk about that some more, but, that flows with that, but, you know, we're talking such a big project that we need to let you move on, and I think, from what I'm hearing now, building new is, from what I've heard, is a lot cheaper than trying to fix something that's going to have to be torn down in five years.
Past experiences tell me the same thing.
Yeah.
It's cheaper to go now.
And the fact that we're paying the same payment, either we're going to bond it, or we're going to pay rent.
I think it's a no-brainer. I think we all agree, so what are we waiting for?
Well, what do we tell Jim to do? What do you need, what do you want from us, so that you don't have to get caught in the middle of it?
That's, that's fine. You're not going to appreciate what I needed next. I, I will make the recommendations to the board, and we'll get the cost data for, for completion of a new building. You're, you're going to have to decide, and hopefully, you'll give some deference to the Board of Elections, what size that building's going to be, and what's going to be housed in it, because recognizing we have a few other entities right now up on Broad Street in the second building, what I would propose to the board is that we drop the one building, we build on the site big enough that we can drop the second building and move the parking over there, and then possibly incorporate all those entities into the one building. We have the title office up there, we have the license bureau, which is contracted to the state, we have the state, state police...
And we're getting rent from that, right?
And we're getting rent, we're getting revenue from those folks.
Forgot about that.
It's kind of a one-stop shopping issue with getting your licensing, taking your, your driving test, and the city of Lirio is strongly supportive of maintaining that one-stop shopping issue. It seems to have worked well. So there's, there's some other issues aside, but we can, we can start, you know, grinding forward with what's, if it's decided here, to look at issues with regard to a new building, and we can negotiate with the architects and the design folks to make a recommendation to the board.
But I think in the long run, with the rent that we're collecting, with the savings from the rent that we're now paying, I, I don't think it's going to cost us any more than what we're paying now for the two buildings.
Be the same cost that we own.
And they'll be new.
Rule of thumb is on, your debt service is right now running about sixty thousand per million dollars of debt, and you can, you can move up from there. Theoretically, with, if the revenue continues the same from the tenants we have, and the rent that we're paying, we should be able to build, as Commissioner Moore said, two and a half million, three million dollar building on the site.
And we should be doing that now, that the interest rates are low.
You absolutely do have to include the Board of Elections and space requirements, and I'm not sure that they'll know them now, because of the fluctuation in how voting is to be delivered to the citizenry. So you've got a big job ahead of you.
So do I have a motion on the floor? Is that what?
You were supposed to make the motion, half an hour ago.
What was the motion, man?
To build a new building, that's what I had.
Okay, well, shouldn't the motion say, is that all you need, Jim?
Yeah, I don't particularly think I even...
Sorry, Elizabeth, can we wait till Jim has answered my question first?
I don't, I don't particularly think I, you need a resolution here, I, I just need a little bit of guidance on, on which way we were moving in direction, so that we can properly negotiate with the firms that are proposed to get some cost data. They want to know what they're putting cost data in on. That's all, it was really a complicated and difficult decision, but an easy, a simple...
Just to instruct you.
Right. So now we can sit down and say, here's what the board's proposing to do, give us some cost data, so that we can engage your firm or not engage your firm in that, in that, in that project.
And then let them engage with the Board of Elections, see what their needs are?
Well, it'll come back to you for approval, because they're going to have to submit a cost proposal to us to accomplish what your desire is. You would hire them, then they would make these meetings, and stakeholder...
And then we can make a decision at that time.
That sounds, that sounds good.
Right.
That's, I just want to get off dead center, so it sounds like we're going.
Okay.
So we don't need a resolution, then? I'm sorry, Jerry.
I, I do want to add something to this, just so you understand the legal issues of it. The location of the Board of Elections is not completely and exclusively a Board of Commissioners's issue. The statute allows them to choose where they're going to lease, and you have a veto over that. I'm not sure where we get to if the Board of Commissioners continually veto where they want to lease, and then you provide them an alternative space and they don't want to go there. I would anticipate that that's, would be an issue that's going to end up in courts, so although...
But which is fine, because we're providing them a free place to stay...
Okay, well, I'm just saying...
Versus a place where they have to waste county taxpayers' money.
We need, we need to bring, bring them in, and somehow, everybody needs to understand that if, if, and I don't know, you know, I don't want to get into the issues of why we can't seem to get together with them, or make any progress in this, but I think one of Jim's, and perhaps my job, is to, to get the word out to the Board of Elections that you're going to proceed, and if they don't start participating now, and in the early process of this, you know, it looks to me somewhere down the line, we're going to bump heads in some litigation, and...
I think Jim has been doing that, haven't you?
Well, we've been trying, so certainly that's what we need, but I, I just need to emphasize, you know, the only thing I think you can do right now is continually keep the Board of Elections advised and say, you know, if we want to take the position, we're not hearing from you, we're not getting any decisions from you as to what you want to do, so we're proceeding, but just so everybody understands that at some point, those two issues are going to bump, and, and it's probably going to bump in litigation, and maybe if we can keep the dialogue open now, we can avoid coming to those loggerheads later on.
Let me, let me restate what I think my, my job here is. It is to negotiate with the various proposers to build a new building, that would include site preparation, which is demoing the old buildings, for design and architectural work on, on a new building, to potentially house both Board of Elections and the other activities that are located in one of the buildings now, and to do that within a budget of two and a half to three million dollars. So there's pretty broad-based parameters to bring you back cost data, if you decide to engage these firms to further that.
With the proposal, with maybe the St. Joe's proposal, how much space they'd need in there?
That would, that would come from the Board of Elections.
I know, but you need to engage them with, right?
Yes, and I have maintained...
Just do a courtesy letter.
I, I will, and I have maintained a communication, and so has the board back on, on the various issues, although there's somewhat of a different perspective, and they seem to be a bit fractured on the issue, so...
I think once you get this information, and then we talk to the Board of Elections again...
At that point.
We just can't seem to get together for whatever reasons.
Okay.
But they may appreciate the information.
These are broad enough parameters to be able to bring you back cost data on architectural design work, Commissioner. Thank you.
Sorry, Elizabeth.
I just wanted to say that someone suggested perhaps the Board of Elections could go out to the airport industrial park. But more important, more importantly, this has been a very good discussion of the various things involved, and it reinforces my sense, which other bodies do, and which I had once suggested to the Commissioners, unsolicited, that when an important matter comes up afresh at a meeting, there should be no decision made on it until the subsequent meeting, at least, in order to give time for this kind of information to be presented, and for the public or whoever else is involved to be informed and able to put some input into it. And so I'm very glad to hear how this, this did come out, instead of there being such a quick decision on what may be a very good idea, but is very complicated.
Madam Chair, just my, I, follow-up. I believe, Elizabeth, that we can't go to the airport, because if my recollection serves me correctly, the Board of Elections is required to be located in the county seat, unless this changed, Jerry, I'm going to ask, and...
As is, you're correct.
And the airport is located in New Russia Township, and a very small portion in Carlisle Township, so we couldn't go there even if it were our number one choice.
But you do know that Bill Graves has his eye set on it.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for recognizing me, but not Jim Cordez.
Okay, number four, approve the CDVG formula program, FYO, three application submission to the State of Ohio's Department of Development in the amount of four hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars.
Do we need to read all that, do you want?
It's the pleasure of you.[1693.81] It's the pleasure of you.
No. This is the same application that was presented to us last week, and I believe that Mr. Twining was asked to look at the possibility of some dollars for Lorain County Transit. And also, there was an issue on Rochester Township, so maybe you just want to address those two issues, especially since one of them came from me. And then...
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Thank you.
We are still here. You have in front of you, under Old Business, the activities that were recommended by the Community Development Staff based on the applications that we received. We also forwarded over to the clerk the, all of the applications and the dollar amounts that were submitted to us for consideration. We were asked to look beyond that at two potential situations. One was Rochester and sidewalk replacements. If you look at activity number 10, home repair, that is lower than we've had in the past four years at $36,600. That's for typically roof replacements, furnace replacements, hot water tanks, things like that. Sidewalks, sewer connections, and replacement of sewer systems have also been, septic systems in township areas with aerators, have been items that we have been able to pay for in the past. Typically, we have always had around $65,000 to $85,000 in that account. And if a project is unable to move forward, we have come back to the Commissioners and asked for amendments, and that almost always, those unspent funds end up in the home repair category. This year, we are spending $100,000 and have already spent $100,000 on home repair. The sidewalks in Rochester are eligible for that home repair activity. Typical sidewalk cost for a typical lot, the size that it are located in, in Rochester, and assuming it's the complete replacement, and it's not always a complete replacement, you could get someplace between six and 12 if all of the home repair monies were spent on the sidewalks only in Rochester. My suggestion, and I think Ms. Glenn's suggestion, is that unfortunately, because we're tied to just six activities for the county's part, that we make a concerted effort to work with the mayor and to get those people to apply. We have had phone calls, as the mayor did represent, but we've yet to have an application that has been made by a property owner at this point for assistance. She claims the residents have said, we have indicated that funds weren't available, but we also, when we do that, make it clear that we'll send out the application and encourage them to apply because we do have a waiting list. So, I don't know exactly what the, we're still looking at what the status was in Rochester, but that will address, in my opinion, the Rochester situation. And we can make a concerted effort, if it's the desire of the Commissioners to handle Rochester in that vein, rather than a specific sidewalk activity for Rochester. The other issue is county transit. The two complicating issues that we have is we have specific national objectives that the federal government, which is the funding source, HUD, to the state of Ohio, makes us follow or try to adhere to, and that's the elimination of slumming blight, which is a high priority. The second item that they like us to fund with formula dollars from HUD is the removal of architectural barriers. And if you look at items eight and nine, those are two projects that are either taking care of the removal of architectural barriers, or in the case of number eight, it's sidewalk improvements in an area that the streets, two streets in Sheffield Township that have been declared blighted and where 51% of the residents must be in a low and moderate income situation. The number was, I believe, 78% of those two streets were below the LMI criteria. So, at that point, we feel that the national objectives are being satisfied with our suggestion to the Board of Commissioners with both number eight and number nine. The third item that is a national objective is to provide funding for homeless shelters, senior citizen counseling, activities to improve the mobility of the physically challenged counseling services sometimes could be there. They fall, meals programs, hot meals programs, they fall into what the state has deemed public service activities. Public service activities for the county's entire funds should be kept at 15%. If they exceed that, we have to seek a waiver letter from the state of Ohio. We have right now ours at, with this proposal, at 25%, so it greatly exceeds that. But the state has indicated that is common, and given the makeup of Lorain County and the clients that we serve, that they most likely will grant that waiver once requested. So, the 25%, I feel that we're in good shape, although it's higher than what the state suggests. If you are going to do transit, it's an eligible activity. The Transit Authority, the Lorain County Transit Authority, would have to track, identify, and regularly report the number of physically challenged individuals that they are serving. And we would need to, as much as possible, and this is what gets tricky, try to decide. First, they obviously would meet the threshold of physically challenged, but they would prefer if there's some way of randomly seeing the income level of the folks that we are helping with this formula grants. And that gets a little problem, but there are surveys that are available to do that. To wrap this up, it's our suggestion, obviously, this is a grant being submitted by the Board of Commissioners. We've only made recommendations. The state has told us that if we're going with transit, that that probably would certainly count as a public service activity. They would not want us to increase more than the 25% that we're doing. We still have to have just six activities. We could not create a seventh. So, to take money away from the three public service activities, items six, seven, and 11 on your sheet, homeless shelters, senior citizen services or counseling, and supportive housing, we couldn't take a portion of each of those and create a new activity number 12. That's not possible. If you're going to make an attempt to fund transit, we certainly would support that, but you would, in our opinion, have to likely eliminate one, two, or three of those public service activities that have been identified as items six, seven, and 11. The last comment that I would make, just so that there's an understanding, because this is rather complicated. The county gets $452,000 this year in the formula grant activities. $239,400 are really for countywide activities. Those are the non-city locations. And if you, of the 452, you take the county's six projects at funded level, $239,400, if you were to take the funding, which you certainly could, for activities such as the street improvements, removal of architectural barriers, or home repair, you would increase the public service, and we're already at $144,000. You'd be increasing that. That $144,000 works out to just slightly over 60% of the $239 that you have available. I'm sorry if that's confusing, but that's the best recap I could give at this late hour on this, and I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. This is an application on your behalf, and we would like to make sure that it's submitted on your behalf.
The bottom line, how much could LCT get if we would do what was necessary to direct funds to them?
If you eliminated the homeless shelter, eliminated the senior services, and eliminated the supportive housing, I didn't tally that amount up, but it looks to me like it's about $60,000 or $70,000.
I do have one amendment, though, on these numbers. Kelly did call me on a number six run for homeless shelter. She said the total should be $278,307.
Two hundred and what, please?
Two hun, excuse me, $278,307, not the 246,57.
As a total, right?
Right. Number 11, under the supportive housing, for the total cost should be $75,000.
$75,000.
And then for total of the application totals would be $754,541, rather than the $679,541.
And another way to look at that, if you provide through the formula allocations, as in number 11, supportive housing, the $25,000, total cost is 75, so the local match that they would have to raise would be the $50,000 for the total project cost of the $75,000. So, you can see this $452,000 from the formula grant is being turned into a total cost with the local match, the federal monies of the $700,000.
Ron, did I hear you say we would have to eliminate the senior program and the homeless?
As an alternative, if you're going to fund county transit, that's, you would have to, you could take away any of those projects, those six projects we have from activity six, seven, eight, nine, 10, or 11. You could roll all of that money minus the admin funds. We've suggested $67,000 for admin, so that would leave you $170,000. They could go to transit, but you would have one activity, and that would be transit. You'd have no homeless, you'd have no senior citizen programming, you'd have no street improvements. The elevator in Columbia Station's Township Hall that is not handicapped accessible would be taken out. The home repair for that would be eliminated, or the supportive housing that's been requested.
What, the street improvements, those are for handicapped?
No, the street improvements is in a slum and blight area in Sheffield Township...
Oh, okay.
Where they have had paved roads that reverted back to gravel. So, we're redoing that and repaving those.
And that would be $27,350?
Right.
Parks and recreational facility.
I have $34,800, and the total cost on the street improvements is $39,684.
What is Parks and Recreation, what does that provide?
Okay, the Parks and Recreation, that's for the city of Amherst. That was handicapped accessible playground equipment, and that was a project. Remember, we have earmarked dollar amounts for the five acquired city that we administer funds for. And so, project, and each city can have no more than three projects. So, activities one through five A are those five cities and the projects that they have put forward.
I'm trying in my mind to prioritize these.
What's the issue? I mean, are we...
Well, we can eliminate some of these.
Why would you want to eliminate any of this?
Well, that's what I'm trying to do, prioritize in my mind what's more important, is it the transit service? Is it street improvements?
No, no, no.
Parks and Recreation?
We give transit quite a bit of money. They got, I mean, $170,000 isn't going to do anything for transit.
I think, Betty, weren't you talking about giving them less from the general fund and them getting some money out of here?
I think they're already getting less than what they asked for.
Yeah, they are.
And I think that we have an issue with transit and how it's going to play out next year. And this is for application for, I suppose, part of next year, okay?
Yes.
So, when the issue came before us last week at a public hearing, I asked if transit could be a considered recipient of these dollars. And so, I think Ron's comments are in response to that question.
Correct.
Okay.
Sorry, I missed it.
And he's saying that we would have to eliminate some of this. And I agree with Commissioner Moore, I'm not willing to eliminate the majority of these. I think they're all very important. But if necessary, maybe street improvements. But that's not going to give them that much, and they're going to have to do a lot of work for that $27,000. And would that be so time-consuming that it wouldn't be worth it? Would be too costly employees' time? I think all of these are very important.
Thank you for your response to my question, Ron.
I wish it was much easier for all of us.
We all do.
Okay, I would entertain the motion.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve the CDVG formula program FYI-03 application submission to the State of Ohio Department of Development in the amount of, is that the right number? $452,000.
Further discussion. Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Clark?
Aye.
New business?
None.
I have none.
Number one, there will be no Board of Commissioners meeting on Thursday, July 3rd. And two, July 24, 2003, at 7:00 p.m. will be the third night meeting in Township Hall, 12043 Avon Belden Road, Grafton, Ohio. Therefore, no meeting will be held that morning. Board of Correspondents?
I will be reading, be waved.
Second.
Discussion? Ms. Clark?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Public comment?
Bob is giving copies of my talk. Last week, you heard me give my personal involvement with Lorain County Transit, which covered the last three and a half decades. Today, I wanted to cover much more recent history. It's the happenings of the last three years, which include a year and a half of meetings under the direction of the Lorain County Commissioners and the Lorain County Community Development Department. Back in November of 2000, the County Commissioners and the County Community Development Department, under the leadership of Mr. Ron Twining, convened more than 200 leaders from Lorain County to meet at least monthly with the end result to develop a five-year county transportation plan. The group was called officially the Lorain County Multimodal Transportation Committee. At the very first meeting, there were committees formed with a liaison staff person from the Community Development Department for each of those committees. These committee members were asked to meet at least monthly for the next year and a half to develop their piece of the plan under the direction of the Community Development Department. I have a copy of the plan that was printed in March of 2002. And the draft was done in February, the final was done in March. I hope that this is not a plan that was written to fill some government requirement, but is now going to sit on the shelf and gather dust. That's not written in there, that's a public comment on what I have written.
Same, I'm looking.
I dislike it when I'm a part of something for a year, a year and a half, and the document is done, and then it's put on a shelf and never looked at again. There was a lot of time put into this by a lot of people. So, I intend to go over part of this plan. And the part that I'm going to reference is section six, which is the public transit section, and it concerns Lorain County Transit. Each section began with challenges, an analysis, and then a recommendation. I will not have time to go through all of the sections. I'll be back again, I'm promising you that, to do more analysis. But today, I'm going to look at number one. Challenge number one from the book says, better inform the public of the benefits of public transit. The benefits include providing convenient and inexpensive transportation alternatives, a safe, efficient, and cost-effective transportation, enhancing the livability of its municipalities by reducing the need for cars in the urban environment. And the recommendation, after there was a bunch of discussion, is, and I'm quoting directly, the county should seek more opportunities to educate the public about the convenience, reliability, and cost-saving of using Lorain County Transit. The county should seek opportunities to work with local government officials in the promotion of public transit in all areas of the county and solving transit issues that may arise. Lorain County Transit has work to do, it's part of this challenge. For many years now, each community in Lorain County is approached by Lorain County Transit and is given a bill for a portion of their funds to assist Lorain County Transit. Lorain County Transit staff and board members are out in the community at festivals, parades, the county fair, and any organization that requests them as a speaker. Those dollars will be ending up in other communities if Lorain County does not bring the, have the local portion to bring the others in. If it were intended to be self-supporting, they would have to charge fees like cab companies charge, and of course, with that, they'd lose the federal and state match money. Last evening, I attended the Lorain County Transit Board meeting, and I heard these ridership statistics. We have a 24% growth for the year over last year, a 26% growth for the month of May over And during the month of May, Lorain County Transit transported 2,690 seniors and people with disabilities. They already count them every month. If you cut Lorain County Transit's funding from its present $2.8 million, we will be going back years to long periods of time between buses, no evening hours, no weekend buses, and fewer people riding fixed routes. The dial-a-ride absolutely will have to be cut. People will be unable to get to work, to medical appointments, and some of them are life-threatening, to school, to the colleges, shopping, and so on. Please, again, I ask you to think hard on what you have to do. And with that, I thank you, and if you have any questions, I'll entertain them.
Thank you, Mary.
I don't have any questions. Do either of you? Anyone here have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else here that would like to comment?
Don't run over the dog.
Okay, thank you.
Don't run over French fry.
Oh, no, I won't run over her, but somebody put a wastebasket behind me.
They see Mark.
Aye.
Do you want to, you guys want to take a break?
Yeah, it's one. One, three. But I can do this.
Oh, you can?
I need to do. It depends how long this is. Six, X, or Y. Always not. There's two.
What's that?
Are still on hold.
What is that? There's two. Ron, did you find out about number 13?
Well, you just sit down and say, Ron. Yes, I did, and as humble as I can, I will confess that we erred. It is not Alaria Township, it is Carlisle, as Mrs. Blair indicated. All other addresses have been confirmed by the applications, our apologies.
Thank you.
You want to do one? Hold on a minute.
We already adjourned executive session, and we'll pick that up when we come back. We also have that, item number 11.
Mr. Moore would provide the information for your question.
There's two other Commissioners here.
I didn't know you wanted to do this, I'm sorry.
You know, why don't we just give it to him? If there was a question on the issue, you should share it with all of us.
Do we humble the party?
Yes. You know, wait, I'll get my stick out, you know?
Yeah. Looks like that. Do you want to take more copies, or, so you can give it to the rest of the Commissioners? You guys want copies of the Justice Center bid? Can you give me copies for the media? They said they're over there, they woke up and said, hey, we'll take that.
They're running that toss. We're going into executive session, we're probably not breaking, I hope.
I got another one. Finding Commissioner. Well, they're early.
We only have the eight.
I did. You don't want me on TV? Oh, you don't.
Commissioners have reconvened from executive session. Do you want to go through number nine, go through the order, or nine, 11, and 13, or doesn't matter?
You're in charge.
Number nine, authorize various personnel actions as indicated on the summary for employees from jurisdictions in Lorain County Board of Commissioners.
Some move.
I'll second with an exception to number one.
What was number one?
Termination.
Who's your exception?
Any further discussion?
Can I say this here, please?
No further discussion. Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye, with the noted exception.
Ms. Blair?
I'll vote aye, but I am staining on number seven.
Number 11, award various contracts for the Phase II construction of Lorain County Justice Center. One, bid package 13A, security equipment, South Shore Electric, Inc., Alaria, Ohio. Base bid is $742,517. Number two, bid package 2A for landscape and irrigation is Puska's Landscape, Lorain, Ohio. Base bid $48,600 with an alternative of $9,000, for a total of $57,600. Issue notice to proceed letters for both contracts effective honor before July 7th and complete contracts honored before June 24, 2004. And authorize county administrator notify county order to release retainage at completion of said project.
Madam President, you had a motion and a second on that item number 11. It was outstanding.
Yes.
All needed was the vote.
I'm sorry.
I moved in Commissioner Basie's second.
Yes.
Okay?
Is there any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Number 13, award various contracts to provide home repair assistance to be paid from fiscal year 2002, CDBG Formula 126022501450422. One, father and son Sheffield Township in the amount of $4,590 for septic replacement assistance for Donna Wilmouth, 41793 Blanche Avenue, Carlisle Township. One bid was received, being the most responsive. Two, Minority Electric Company, Inc., Lorain, in the amount of $1,775 for electrical repair for William and Patricia Walco, 5 Gover Court, Carlisle Township. Three bids were received, this being the most responsive. And three, Burge Builders Company, Inc., Lorain, in the amount of $6,912.18 for foundation repair for Gale Spike, 899 South Lake Street, South Amherst, Ohio. Two bids were received, this being the most responsive.
Some move.
Discussion? Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Moore?
Aye.
Public comment?
[coughs]
Yes, Commissioners, we still have outstanding, the matter of the attorney bill submitted by Attorney Jeffrey Holland on behalf of representing animal cruelty cases in Oberlin Municipal Court for Erie Shores Humane Society. Based on the discussions from the Commissioners, it seems to be the consensus that we should pay attorneys who prosecute cases, private attorneys who prosecute cases the same thing that we pay private attorneys who defend these kinds of cases. Therefore, I would ask that the Commissioners pass a resolution indicating that Mr. Holland be paid in accordance with the fee schedule that is adopted for the payment of court-appointed attorneys. That schedule is $50 an hour for trial work, $40 an hour out of court, and subject to the cap, which in the case of matters in municipal courts is $250.
Also move.
I'll second.
Discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
So what are we saying, the $50 an hour or the $250 cap?
Well, it's, it's-
Up 2250, that's a cap.
Right. If he only worked one hour, then he would only get, in court, he would only get $50. But in this case, he's gone far beyond that, so he's subject to the cap, which is $250.
Okay, thank you. Aye.
That's, it's not automatically $250, if they only work one hour, they'll only get the one-hour fee.
Okay.
Now, you can move.
I'm going now.
Oh, you want to stay? Okay, then I'll move to adjourn.
I'll talk to them.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
So what are we saying, the $50 an hour or the $250 cap?
Well, it's, it's-
Up 2250, that's a cap.
Right. If he only worked one hour, then he would only get, in court, he would only get $50. But in this case, he's gone far beyond that, so he's subject to the cap, which is $250.
Okay, thank you. Aye.
That's, it's not automatically $250, if they only work one hour, they'll only get the one-hour fee.
Okay.
Now, you can move.
I'm going now.
Oh, you want to stay? Okay, then I'll move to adjourn.
I'll talk to them.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Moore?
Aye.
Ms. Basie?
Aye.
Here, adjourn.
Thank you.